Good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters of St. Lucy County Candidate Forum for the 2022 Primary Election Year. I am Sabrina Taylor. It certainly is my pleasure to be with you and thank you for making time out of your busy schedule to not only meet us of the League, but more importantly, the candidates as you make your selections. I am the current president of the local League. And before we get started, which is the real reason why you're here, just a few quick reminders and dates that we'd like to be able to share with you. So the League of Women Voters St. Lucy County website is www.lwslc.org. The Supervisor of Elections Office of St. Lucy County website is www.slcelections.com. And of course, early voting is slated to begin August 13th and end on August 20th from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Of course, Election Day is August 23rd and those hours are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Please note that this year, a vote, a photo and signature identification is required. So also, there are some early voting locations that you should be aware of just in case. So one in Port St. Lucie, the Paula A. Lewis Library, 2950 Southwest Rosser Road Boulevard, rather, in Port St. Lucie. The Port St. Lucie Community Center, 2195 Southeast Aroso Boulevard, also in Port St. Lucie. The Mid-Florida Credit Union Event Center, also known as the Civic Center, 9221 Southeast Event Center Place. There are three, two Fort Pierce locations, the Zora Neale Hurston Library, 3008 Avenue Diaz and David in Fort Pierce. The Renaissance Business Park, formerly known as Orange Blossom Business Center, located at 4132 Okeechobee Road, again, in Fort Pierce. And lastly, a new location in Port St. Lucie. It is the Indian River State College Veterans Center of Excellence, the Pruitt Cancer Campus, rather, at 500 Northwest California Boulevard. Before we turn it over to our host for the evening, please check out Vote411. That is where you can get all your information about your candidates. The website is vote411.org. Just a bit of a direction around that. Put in your mailing address and it will populate those candidates that are specific to your address. If you do not, it's going to give you a lot of information that can be sometimes overwhelming. So again, vote411.org. When you go onto that website, put in your mailing address to get the candidates that are relevant to you and that you're interested in as well. So now, on to the forum. Tonight, you were here from candidates vying for the office of Port St. Lucie City Council, District One. The format for tonight's forum will consist of a 90-second introduction by each candidate, followed by a series of questions. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question and a two-minute closing statement at the end. The order of candidates was randomly selected prior to the start of this forum. Also, no, this is not a debate. So candidates will make their statements and we will then move on to the next candidate or question. Lastly, candidates will be alerted at the 30-second mark and again, when their time is up. Our moderator for this evening is none other than Ms. Carol Wyatt. Carol is the co-owner and operator of local radio stations WPSL, Port St. Lucie, WSTU in Stewart, and WJNX in Fort Pierce. She is the president of WPSL Christmas for Kids of St. Lucie County, the past president of the Rotary Club of Port St. Lucie, and a member of Port St. Lucie Businesswomen. Additionally, Carol has many years in broadcasting, including as a reporter in Los Angeles, prior to moving to Florida in 1993. We are so honored to have her as our candidate for a moderator yet for another year. And now I turn it over to Carol.
Thank you, Sabrina, and welcome to the League of Women Voters of St. Lucy County Candidate Forum. We thank the members of the League, as always, for developing the questions and bringing everyone together. We thank the candidates for participating and particularly, we thank all of the people listening and watching who have chosen to inform themselves about the upcoming election. Tonight, Port St. Lucie City Council, District One. It is a citywide race for a term of four years. It represents kind of the north-central part of the city. The incumbent is Stephanie Morgan, running for reelection. The challengers, Indonie Jean Baptiste and Kevin Zimmerman. Now, Stephanie Morgan and Indonie Jean Baptiste are with us this evening. We are hopeful Mr. Zimmerman can join us. But we begin with opening statements, 1 minute 30 seconds, and we'll start with Stephanie Morgan.
And I've just unmuted myself. Experience, vision, and passion. My name is Stephanie Morgan and I am committed to continue working for the residents of Port St. Lucie. I have lived in Port St. Lucie for over 50 years, married for over 25, and I love to read fish and ride my Harley. So the three Ts, trash, traffic, and taxes, that about sums it up. The council continues to work together in holding Waste Pro accountable, making sure that we are a safe, clean, and beautiful city once again. We have worked hard with Waste Pro and we will be moving forward on September 5th with our new vendor. I have served on the Planning and Zoning Commission of the St. Lucie County for 13 years. I am a chamber ambassador. I am a board member of the Metropolitan Planning Organization Area Council for the state, representing the Transportation Planning Organization of St. Lucie County. I am also on the governing board, the Florida League of Cities. Past president and treasurer of the Port St. Lucie Businesswomen, amongst many others that you can find out on my website. I am committed. I do my homework and I'm not afraid to speak up and do what's right for the community. I am endorsed by the TC Palm, the Treasure Coast Builders Association, the Realtors Association, the Chamber of Commerce, the firefighters and paramedics of St. Lucie County. Together, we can achieve more, more with Morgan. Thank you.
Now, opening statement, Indonie Jean Baptiste.
Thank you very much. My name is Indonie Jean Baptiste. I am your candidate for PSL City Council, District One. In my risk, there are three candidates and one of us has not had a public office for the past. So there's nothing for you to review such as what school I have attended, what football team I have played for. So, or do you choose the right person to represent you? The choice is clear. I have the experience for 14 years as a security warehouse and facilities manager for ADP, which stands for Automatic Data Processing, and a combined law enforcement experience within the state of Florida and Virginia. Most important, working on budget with my knowledge on safety and security. You need to tell twice about who has true leadership to preserve our community and avoiding higher property taxes, homeowners insurance, particularly the ongoing mess we are facing right now with the waste management. Everywhere you turn, it's trash, trash, trash. That problem represents a serious health issue. And with my experience, I believe I can get the job done. And working with cross aisle, with everyone together, I believe we can accomplish a better job. My answer to your question, if you ask who is the best candidate to serve the community of Port St. Lucie, I will say I am the person who can do the job and get it done.
Thank you. We will hear more from both of our candidates as we go along. We have to move into our questions now. You have two minutes to respond to each question and we will rotate who starts off first. Since we started with Stephanie Morgan, we will come back to Indonie Jean Baptiste for the first question. And as you both have addressed, the biggest issue in Port St. Lucie right now is garbage collection. Last two years, the city's perceived inability to handle it over a couple of years. In your opinion, is this problem adequately resolved? How do you intend to prevent a problem like this occurring with other services in the future, Mr. Baptiste?
My answer, I am concerned with, first of all, they have proposed a new company and the new company they have proposed for the waste management issue. Not only they propose less service, less pickup, and you'll be paying more for the service. On top of that, they propose to give a larger container. What I'm concerned about, our senior citizen, not everybody would be able to move that heavy container they have proposed. And at the same time, I'm concerned for the past few years, they haven't been able to control Waste Pro. Or do what makes you think they're gonna be able to control the new company? So therefore, I think we have a management issue and we also need to take this more seriously, to work together. Therefore, we can even check with other cities to see other manage issues like that for the past few years. And from there, we can learn from it and provide a better job to our citizens. The trash issue is a very serious matter because no matter where you turn, for two, three weeks, you even see, you know, raccoons, flies all over, which create a health hazard. Therefore, I think this is something that really need to pay good attention because I don't think the correct system in place is doing a good job. I think I can do a better job by working with the management team because I already have the experience for the past 14 years.
Okay, Ms. Morgan, same question. Is this problem adequately resolved and how do you intend to prevent a problem like this occurring with other services in the future? We had a huge issue.
I know. I muted. I am so sorry. Adequately resolved and also, I lost my train of thought because I was totally muted and I was on a roll. But preventing it from happening even in the future, I don't have a crystal ball. I can't tell you that it's not going to happen again. My biggest issue is that we tried to work with Waste Pro for the last over two years. And we all know what happened in Port St. Lucie and not just Port St. Lucie, the entire nation, the entire world was COVID. It was lack of employees, lack of equipment. There was a lot of things that were an issue. Our staff started meeting with Waste Pro. Waste Pro came to the city and made promises that were never kept. At that point in time, we did administer fees, fines towards Waste Pro in the millions. We used that money to hire another company to come in and help offset it. FCC has mobilized and is out there and helping us pick up. We opened up the drop-off site. We have been working on this endlessly. We're all affected. I get it. But when Waste Pro brought in or said that they were leaving, they were quitting, we went out for an RFP immediately and rushed it. And we now have a new carrier. And yes, the prices went up, the prices have gone up on everything. But we will do our best to make Waste Pro accountable, to hold FCC accountable, and make our city beautiful as it is and will be once again. Thanks.
Hey, we understand Kevin Zimmerman has entered the Zoom room here, so we will ask you the same question. The biggest issue brought to our attention in Port St. Lucie, of course, is garbage collections. In your opinion, is the problem adequately resolved and how do you intend to prevent a problem like this occurring with other services in the future, Kevin Zimmerman?
First and foremost, I want to thank you all for having me and apologize. I've been sitting here since 10:00 of 7 and Zoom is not my thing and I've been trying to get on and so my apologies for being late regarding the trash issue. Is it resolved? I think we're getting there. I think the, you know, there's going to be a transition that takes place in September. The new trash cans are already being distributed. They've set up the days of the week for pickup. I spoke with a gentleman at the FCC at a meeting earlier this week and he's afraid that Waste Pro is gonna, you know, leave at the end of the month and still have a lot of trash they haven't picked up. So they're going to spend the first possibly few weeks just playing catch-up. And then, of course, there's going to be some growing pains while the city gets used to the new system, the new dates. But I believe the bulk trash pickup, which has been an issue in the past and should have been the first sign to the city council that something was wrong, is going to continue to be a problem. And it probably required a lot of code enforcement and education to get people to stop dumping half their house on the side of the road. I believe that that should have been an à la carte service and something that Port St. Lucie moving forward shouldn't have done. Will there be problems in the future? If we don't address the bulk issue problem, I believe there will be. Other than that, I think going with these one-arm trucks and the individual trash cans will make things a lot simpler moving forward. And once they get the groove, I wouldn't see a lot of issues in the future after the bulk trash is addressed.
Okay, our second question, and we are rotating, who takes, who gets the first shot at each question? So we come back to Stephanie Morgan. Port St. Lucie has grown in population exponentially over the last two decades. The trajectory of growth is not projected to end anytime soon. So what actions do you propose to address the level of growth in Port St. Lucie?
So it's very interesting with the level of growth in Port St. Lucie. This was a city that was planned and we all know the history, I would hope, with Mackel Brothers and GDC. We have 80,000, 80 by 125 lots. We also have several developers out in the Southern Grove and Western Grove area that had DRIs and DOs, which is Development Regional Impacts and Development Orders, which includes entitlements as to their growth. Now, this all happened many, many, many years ago. So we were going to see growth and we are going to continue to see growth because we cannot go against property rights. So think of it as if you owned a lot and you wanted to go build a house, we cannot stop you from building on your property. What we can do is be smart about the growth. Make sure that the infrastructure is in place. Make sure that the developers are putting in their fair share for our roads. We have to get a control on the traffic and work with mobility in our transit system with the county and work with our developers and the builders of this community. It is going to happen and we are over 218,000 in population. We are the seventh largest city and the third largest in landmass. But what I will say, I will always follow the law and I will abide by property rights, but we can do it smart. And that's what we will continue to do and I will continue to do to serve the residents of Port St. Lucie.
Hey, Mr. Zimmerman, same question. What would you do to propose to address the level of growth in Port St. Lucie?
As Ms. Morgan already stated, as far as the people that already applied and able to build, not going to have much control over that. But as the city grows, so is going to grow crime and safety concerns. You can't grow a population to half a million people, which is what is proposed to be here in the next few years and not expect more crime issues. I'm also concerned about water and our natural resources and our environment, protecting the St. Lucie River, protecting our other natural resources. Again, we, I don't think we're going to be able to stop the building, but we're going to have to address and be proactive in the areas of crime and public safety. So in those areas, I'll support law enforcement and first responders. I'm always going to be looking out for our rivers and our waterways and our natural environment so that we can keep the city, one of the safest cities in the country, and keep it a place that people want to live and are happy to live here.
Okay, Mr. Baptiste, same question. What actions do you propose to address this level of growth in Port St. Lucie?
First of all, I am concerned about more police presence in the city as we continue our rapid growth. I am also concerned about the recent garbage crisis, as I mentioned earlier. Especially, I'm concerned we stay on top of new contracting. I'm concerned about the increase in costs with less pickup, as I mentioned earlier. The police presence become a major issue because it doesn't matter what you have heard on the news, we are shot on police in Port St. Lucie. Because right now, everywhere you go, most likely, you're not gonna see that many police presence. And this has become an issue because we, from what I understand, we no longer have the police community, which we used to have in a certain community. And the more we grow, the more we don't have more police presence, it's gonna become a problem. As far as construction is going on, it's good for business. Building more houses is good for business. The only issue is, is we need to build more road. If we don't have enough road, the traffic gonna be packed. And we can see it's been going on, you know, especially in the afternoon, the traffic already packed because the more we build, less road, it becomes a problem. I'm very concerned about that.
Okay, thank you. And actually, our next question, we'll start with Mr. Zimmerman. With the rise in population comes traffic. Port St. Lucie is very spread out, covers a large area. How do you propose addressing the traffic concerns of the residents, Mr. Zimmerman?
With common sense and logic and without a lot of bureaucracy, I hope. It's very easy to approve roads and bridges and things like that. We've got a lot of great things going on with the new bridge being built across 95 over in St. Lucie West. The yellow flashing, yellow turn arrows that they put up there in St. Lucie West are a great start. But besides just building new roads and approving new infrastructure, we need to look at the existing infrastructure. And there's things, but right now, that we can do at intersections around the city that would speed up traffic. And so people understand, something as simple as making a right turn on red, where you can't do it right now in certain areas, something like late at night and during non-peak hours, again, making those yellow flashing arrows for left turns, little things like that. It's the little things that frustrate people, people that drive to work every day, they get stuck at the same intersection, looking at the same red light or waiting at the same lane where they can't make a right turn and there's no traffic coming and nobody seems to do anything. And these are little tweaks that if the current city council was really concerned about traffic and really wanted to do something they could do tomorrow, or they could have done two years ago, because these roads aren't new, roads like Crosstown, St. Lucie West Boulevard, St. Lucie Boulevard, where there's a lot of traffic and congestion, there's things that can be done on those roads tomorrow that could have been done again years ago. So we need to look at, yes, infrastructure and new infrastructure, but we also need to look at the infrastructure that's in place right now and what we can do to make it even better for our residents.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Baptiste, with the rise in population, traffic. How do you propose to address traffic concerns?
First of all, right now, we have an issue. When you look at the Crosstown Parkway with Floresta Drive, if you come in from Floresta Drive, instead of get a traditional traffic light to cross, you would have to turn and go make a U-turn. To me, that was bad management and it's a waste of taxpayers' money. So when I mentioned earlier, we need more road, essentially, you cannot grow without having more road. You cannot keep building, building without having more road. The more you have more traffic, it becomes a problem. What I'm trying to avoid is having a Port St. Lucie, such a beautiful city, turn out to be a place like Miami, a place like Broward. The more we keep building more infrastructure, less road, we're gonna have more problems. And also, it's gonna become a problem that's also gonna create more crimes because the way it's going right now, so rapid, we're growing so fast and we don't have enough road, you know, with more infrastructure, more building, less road, it becomes a serious problem that must be addressed with the city council to get it resolved as soon as possible. Otherwise, we'd be in trouble in the next few years.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie Morgan. How do you propose addressing traffic concerns?
Well, and what I've heard, I would encourage all candidates to look into the roads that are in Port St. Lucie. The Department of Transportation and the Turnpike Enterprise, of course, is doing the overpasses in St. Lucie West. The county has been a partner with DOT and also the city of Port St. Lucie to work on Peacock and St. Lucie West Intersection to relieve that. When it comes to Crosstown, that was a federal job. We cannot turn right on red at US1. That is coming from Department of Transportation. We tried a couple of years ago. It will not be done and that's under their jurisdiction. The other thing is with the, the Intersection Act, or AKA the Super Street at Crosstown, that was recommended by the Federal Highway Safety Administration and we followed their recommendations to prevent more accidents and to save lives. If we were to change it at this juncture, it would cost the taxpayers in excess, I would guess, the last, what we got was six to eight million dollars. I would imagine with all of the construction that has increased and the materials, it would probably be close to $10 million to change that. It is working, of course, with the police department giving their information. We've also changed from road impact fees to mobility fees so that we can work on different areas in the city. It doesn't have to be right there in that area. We're increasing for sidewalks and multi-use paths. We are working on this continually and we are, thank goodness for the sales tax increase, we got the money. Floresta is being redone. Phase one is complete and we are starting on phase two and three, which will enhance that neighborhood. But as far as the traffic, we are working on it as hard as we can. I do serve as chair of the Transportation Planning Organization and this is part of our long-range plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Baptiste. The city has secured agreements with multiple corporations over the last few years that bring numerous jobs to our area, but many feel the diversity of employment here is not But many feel the diversity of employment here is not adequate for a population with varying levels of education and skill. How do you intend to further diversify the economy to meet the skills of the population? Mr. Baptiste?
My answer to the questions is job, job, job. And as I said before, let's form a way to help the small local merchants the same way we subsidize big company that want to come to Port St. Lucie. I'm not against big business, that's not what I meant. But we need to help the small guys at the same time. We need to get more entertainment for the civic center. Example, by bringing like big artists and small local artists. Because we have a lot of youth, once they graduated from either high school or college, they tend to go elsewhere, either somewhere else in Florida or out of state. Meanwhile, we could keep them here because we need more young police officers, more deputies. On top of that, we also need more trading school. All these things would also bring jobs in order to keep, you know, our youth to stay, to remain in our city. Because we have a lot of young kids, once they graduated, they just move out of state. And if we create more opportunities for the small merchants, we're gonna end up with ten or young graduated.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, how would you further diversify the economy to meet the skills of the population?
That's an interesting question. And I want to make sure I understand it correctly or I answer it correctly. We have a very diverse population, from teenagers up to seniors. Now, the companies that are coming in, some that are already here, like FedEx, we've got CDI, we've got the flower company, I don't remember the name off the top of my head, we've got Amazon. And it seems as though those types of opportunities are going to offer everyone from the guy who, or lady who drops out of high school to somebody who's well-educated, you know, they're going to have entry-level jobs at those places. Somebody who worked at UPS for 10 years. Now, I'm a high school graduate with a little bit of education, you know, self-education in college. And I went to work for UPS years ago and started as a helper in the winter time, moved up to driver and then into management. I think these are great companies we already have here in place for people that just have a high school background or somebody who's got a degree and wants to go into management at these companies. I think the bigger problem that we're going to have right now, if you look at Indeed.com, there's over 10,000 job opportunities here available in Port St. Lucie. And then we've got these companies that haven't even opened up yet. I think the bigger problem we're going to have is not the diversity, but how are we going to find people to fill all these jobs from here in the city when half the population is retired or not working, doesn't want to work? So I'm more concerned about filling the jobs now. I think we've done a good job getting the business here. Now we've got to fill the jobs.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the next question, Stephanie Morgan. Port St. Lucie is a predominantly residential city. Based on the original plans of the General Development Corporation, there are still single-family resident lots to build on. Is following the original plans of GDC the best course of action for the city? Or should adjustments be made to better reflect current needs? Ms. Morgan?
First, oh, let me, oh, I am unmuted. Can I, can I answer the last question?
Did I skip you? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did, but it's okay. I mean, I can, I can go ahead and.
I am sorry.
That's all right.
If you want to go back to the last question, how do you intend to further diversify the economy? I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
That's okay. Hey, I get it. We're all human, right? So the jobs, we have so many great companies coming into Port St. Lucie and St. Lucie County, period. The Amazons, the FedEx, the Chaney Brothers, Excel Wire Coated Manufacturer, Tamco, Oculus. And we have Galleria Farms that is coming out on Glades Cut Off. And I can't wait for the smell of all those fresh flowers. Employ, the jobs are out there. And the city council, and me in particular, work very closely with the school district to make sure that the curriculum is there for students to take advantage of. I work closely with Indian River State College. They do the same. We have to get these skilled trades. It's very important. And the Treasure Coast Builders Association just had a boot camp. And they do boot camps so they can have hands-on and figure out what they want to do, whether it's automotive or manufacturing, or a driver, or even a CDL driver to drive around our trash trucks. So they have all of this training available. And it has started, and of course, we had the hiccup, but it has started and it's been a great success. We just got a report today at the Economic Development Council luncheon. And the Treasure Coast Manufacturing Association is wonderful also. So the learning is out there. We do want to have our students get the education that they deserve and want and find the right job and the right fit for them. Because we want them to stay here or come back so they can live, work, and play right here in the beautiful city of Port St. Lucie. Now, do you want me to go to the next one?
Well, everyone has heard the next question. So yes, if you want to proceed, follow the original plans of GDC, or should adjustments be made to better reflect current needs?
So it's kind of difficult to go backwards. And being that I have lived here since 1962, I've seen it from nothing to what we are today. The, trying to keep up with it, but this was originally plotted at 80,080 by 125, by 125 acre lots. So what we have to do is work with that moving forward to see where, you know, the city can go better with infrastructure. And especially, I've heard, the police department. Now, infrastructure is a high attribute that we work on very hard. I live in an area in District One that had a moratorium on it until the water and sewer was put into place. And that was 22, 23 years ago. So this is very important, and the conversions from septic to sewer is very important for our clean water. As far as the police department, we are such a huge city. We are 121 square miles, third largest in the state. And we are getting ready within this next year to start District Five of our police department. We are well-staffed. I was just at a squareeening of five new officers. And we look forward to the city growing, growing smart, safe, clean, and beautiful.
Okay, thank you. So we pick up with Mr. Zimmerman, is following the original plans of GDC the best course of action for the city, should adjustments be made to better reflect current needs?
As Stephanie noted, it's kind of hard to go backwards. What I'm guessing the city currently needs in the way of housing is more affordable housing, one. And two, probably gearing away from single-family homes to more apartments and condos. Now, whether GDC would do that or even zone for that, I wouldn't know at this point. I would have to look into it when I'm elected, and I absolutely would. I think we have to, wherever we can, look at ways to make housing more affordable and ways to maybe get away from some of the single-family homes. There's, I think there's more than enough here in the area. And start looking, because again, it goes back to the jobs and all these companies coming in. If you want to bring people here, you got to have places for them to live. And we just can't, everything just can't be single-family homes as much as we would like it to. Because hey, I'd like to live on an acre of property, but I'll just settle for my quarter acre. But yeah, when it comes to housing, we have to start looking at maybe more condos, smartly building more condos and apartment buildings, and most importantly, affordable housing.
Okay, Mr. Baptiste, is following your original plans of GDC best, or should we make adjustments?
There's always room for adjustment. And by the way, thank you for the questions. There's always room for adjustment. The city is led by a five-member elected council. We set policy and determines the long-term vision for the city. Right now, we have a crisis of housing, which is out of control. Someone actually could leave in a house right now, and the landlord decided just to raise the rent by 500 to $1,000. And there's no government official would say anything, at least to come up with some type of rent control. So to the point, it's like the salary remain the same and the cost for, you know, renting a house, you know, keep increasing. So I kind of agree in a way with Stephanie and Mr. Zimmerman. In a way, we need more affordable housing because it is a crisis right now. A lot of people can't even afford to live in Port St. Lucie no more because of the renting situation, because it's out of control. So there's always room for adjustment. And I believe the city council could work together and try to create some type of adjustment on the house situation because it's out of control.
Okay, thank you. Going on to our next question, we'll start with Mr. Zimmerman. Port St. Lucie has a tagline, "A city of all, for all ages, a city for all ages." However, many of our high school graduates go off to college. They do not return, partly for the lack of relevant jobs. What steps would you take to make the city more appealing to young people entering the workforce?
Am I on? I don't see myself. Yeah, I'm on. I don't see myself. Okay. Well, I think we talked about a little bit already, and Ms. Morgan mentioned it. You know, getting into the schools, and really, it's communication with the schools, working with the local schools, letting the teenagers know, hey, there's opportunities right here. You don't have to leave the city. A lot of that's going to come with communication. And working with the students in the schools to let them know, whether it's FedEx, whether it's Amazon, or getting a CDL license if you don't plan on going to college. There's lots of opportunities right here. Trade schools, another great idea. For, we're going to have, we already have a shortage. It's just hard to find a good plumber. It's hard to find a good electrician. So absolutely encouraging young people to work, get in with trade schools or to apprentice with people that are already in business. Really, it just comes down to communication. I think that young people need to know they don't need to leave. This isn't 2010 or 2011. The jobs are here now. The opportunity is here. Now we just got to let them know about it and get them excited about working right in their own city, and they don't have to leave.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baptiste, in a city for all ages, how would you make the city more appealing to young people?
As I said before, it's job, job, job. By creating more jobs, give incentive to our local merchants. If they will hire and train our graduated youth, so we can keep them local. Because if we don't create better opportunity locally, like we mentioned, like FedEx, UPS, Amazon, yeah, these are good jobs. But at the same time, we also shot on trading school. I have several examples. I have people contacting me regarding nursing school. Some of our youth wants to go to trading school to become CNA, medical assistant, or certain things like electrician, plumbing. We no longer have them. So I think this is very important in order to keep our youth from going elsewhere once they graduated high school. There's a big difference between trading school and going to college. And college takes longer to learn certain things, while trading school, it's quicker. So we definitely need more trading school, and we need to create more jobs. And we need to make it a little easier for the small business to remain active to create more jobs for our youth. Thank you.
Okay, Stephanie Morgan, making the city more appealing to young people entering the workforce?
Again, I keep hitting that "you" button. I'm going to learn probably by the end of the interviews. To make it more enticing, I mean, I would have to say, the jobs are here or they're coming. It has been proven that you don't need a master's or a four-year degree or.
Ms. Morgan, you're muted again.
I am. So I will. I can't believe, I must have muted and then remuted myself. I was talking.
To shortly recap what we missed, I wasn't sure where the problem was.
I am so sorry. That's, I don't like, I like to put my mute on in case my dogs start barking or something goes on. But it's interesting when you had said the city for all ages. They had a contest years and years ago for that. And I knew the lady that came up with that and won that. And she has since passed, and she was so passionate about Port St. Lucie. But to make it more enticing, we have so many diversified field of jobs that are available or will be coming available from drivers all the way. And I don't know if many people know what Oculus is, but they do eye surgery, surgical equipment. And that is manufactured right here in Port St. Lucie. We have so many small businesses here, maybe in a small business owner myself for 15 years. I encourage all of the entrepreneurs out there. We have programs available. The Chamber of Commerce is a wealth of information. So in order to keep or entice them back, keep things coming in the area, I mean, we have the Mets, we have parks, we have the Port District, we have concerts. And I just wanted to tag along, even with the medical fields, with IRS-C and with Kaiser, we have great things out there. And I have to say with IRS-C, and I see something going up, with IRS-C with their project promise, why would you want to leave when you can graduate from here and go to college at no expense for you? It's all paid for. So that, to me, working hand-in-hand with them is the key to.
Okay, the next question, we'll start with Mr. Baptiste. The city has worked very hard to reduce taxes for homeowners over the last six years. Do you believe the taxes should continue to be reduced? And how will you accomplish that without reducing services to residents? Mr. Baptiste?
Absolutely. We need to continue reduce taxes to our residents. That's what's going to keep the economy growing. Because I'm the type of person, I believe in small government, not big government. And reduce taxes, it's something that's really important because the more taxes you have on your resident, it's more burden. It's like you're pushing them out. So I would definitely agree with it and then work. It's not something I can say I'm going to do by myself because it takes all the council members to work together to propose certain things to, or we can cut, or we can increase in order to keep it going. So I think it's very important that we do not increase taxes on our citizens because Port St. Lucie right now is one of the highest taxes in Florida. We are one of them. And then it looks like we are in the direction, we're going further instead of reduce the taxes. Yes, we talk about. Yes, we talk about reducing it, but at the same time, you may cut in one and you're going up in another one. So if we're talking about reducing taxes, cut taxes, let's do it professionally and let's do it honestly. So therefore, I am entirely for cutting taxes. Thank you for the question.
Okay, uh it's for Stephanie Morgan. Same question. Do you believe taxes should continue to be reduced? And how do you accomplish that without reducing services?
The biggest thing. Oh, I'm not muted. The biggest thing, of course, this year and the past few years, our property values have increased. Greatly. I, I don't know off the top of my head right now the percentage for this year, but I think it's close. It's between fifteen and twenty percent that are property values. We have successfully lowered the millage rate for the last seven years here in Port St. Lucie. I just want to emphasize that on your tax bill. There are, we're only two of the line items for the city and the cross-town debt. The rest of them have to do with St. Lucie County, the school district, our St. Lucie County Fire District. Of which I serve on the board. We are not the highest taxing authority in Port St. Lucie in the state. St. Lucie County as a whole was, but I do understand that they are reducing their millage rate this year also. So this will all come with our budget hearings. But we also have to take in effect. My main priority is the safety. So if it comes to the level of service for the police department. Or the public works. Or our utilities, which is our water and sewer and our parks. That's difficult. You want to maintain a level of service. And we have to give our share for that. But I'm proud to say we reduced it seven years in a row and it was, I believe, three-tenths of a mil this year, which is. You will see a big difference. Thanks.
Okay, same question to Mr. Zimmerman. Um should we continue to reduce taxes or accomplish it without, how do you accomplish it without reducing services?
I'm always for reducing taxes. And again, Ms. Morgan is correct. The, the city has done a good job of reducing the millage rate. Each year uh for the past few years. And there is only two areas, which again, this is about communication because a lot of people aren't aware. They look at their tax bill and they say, you know, city council, oh, the city council did this. The city is only responsible for the cross-town debt and the millage rate. So it's going to take to lower taxes any further. It's going to take reaching across the aisle. And I consider myself a team player and a good negotiator. And working with people in the county and the school board and these, and the fire district. To look at lowering taxes in those other areas because that's quite frankly controlled by the county and other. Things that are out of the control of the city council. But as a city council person, I believe you gotta work. Play well with everybody and that includes, you know, the commissioners and the, the school board and everybody else that has a say in the city and how it's run. Debt. I think another way we could lower taxes is get rid of the six hundred or, you know, work on lowering the six hundred and sixty-five million dollars in debt that this city is. I was shocked to see that we're still in that much debt. I would initially think of having an audit on the city's budget. And as far as I'm concerned, there's always waste in places somewhere that can be cut. To reduce the budget and reduce debt. And by doing that, I think we could uh. Lower taxes just by doing that alone. I think there's always ways to be found somewhere and uh an audit of the budget would be a good idea.
Okay, next question. We'll start with Stephanie Morgan. What are your top three priorities for protecting our environment and waterways in the face of climate change and explosive development?
Wow. I'm not muted. So with the water quality and environmental and something happened to my screen. Um as most, or I hope most of everyone realizes that what we have out at McCarty Ranch. And out at McCarty Ranch, we have a water farming area that has over seven cells and we are just now completing our third cell for that. What that is doing is removing the phosphorus and the nitrates from the water that goes back into our waterways. We are. Working with all of the developers on the water quality and our storm water is very important. We urge everyone to be educated on the storm water. A lot of times when it rains, you know, when it rains in Florida, especially during the summer, of course, we haven't had it in a long time. We haven't had it in so long that it will back up or needs to flow. And that's what we really work on and I pride ourselves on our wallet, water quality and all of our storage. Our drainage and our canals that we work on. We have a great department in the public works in our utilities. And I'm all for the clean water and. Working together with that in McCarty Ranch. If you haven't been there, it's a must-see out there. We work closely with South Florida Water Management and we also work with FIND, which is the Florida. Intercoastal Navigational District. It's all these acronyms, but with that, we're all about clean, safe, and beautiful. And that includes clean water. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Zimmerman, your top three priorities for protecting the environment and waterways?
Uh I lost you here. Bear with me here. Water. Well, first we can start by getting the trash picked up. Uh because all that, when it rains, it pours and all that runs off into our sewer system and our waterways. Uh so just getting the trash picked up will be a good start. I have not, I'm not currently in the city council. Um so I will have to educate myself. I'm actually going to be setting up a meeting here with the gentleman. That handles all the water and issues with the river and so forth in the county of Port St. Lucie. Uh to find out what concerns are and what we can do moving forward. I will absolutely support anything that protects the St. Lucie River. Keeps us drinking clean water. Protects our wildlife and our environment. As far as specifics, a-again, I would want to know what the current concerns are from somebody in the city. And I just haven't had a chance to meet with them yet to give you a better answer. All I can tell you for sure is you can bet that I will do everything I can to protect our water and our natural environment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baptiste. Your top three priorities for protecting our environment and waterways?
Thank you for the questions. First, we need total community recycling. This is important. Uh especially right now, it seems to me we no longer. Uh concern about recycling and this is very important in order to keep the environment safe. Also, with my experience visiting several countries, especially in the Caribbean, I have. The last place that I have seen uh places like South School. It's small countries like that and a big city like Port St. Lucie. I just can't believe we are not in total sewage. These days, sewage is very important in order to keep the environment safe. I also, I'm the type, the person who believe, you know, in protecting the uh animals. Like wildlife animals. I'm very concerned about that. Uh we need to find a way to protect them, to preserve them. And our water, we have issues with our drinking waters. Uh most people probably don't realize it. We need a better clean water in Port St. Lucie. And uh the rivers, I kind of agree with Mr. Zimmerman. So we, there are ways to work on issues like that. Me, as a former facilities manager, with my experience, I can work with other members. To come up with solution to protect our rivers. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And uh thank all of you. We have reached the end of our questions and certainly thank you for being with us tonight. We are now going into the closing statements. You'll each have two minutes and let's start with Kevin Zimmerman.
Back in the spring here. Kind of get used to this Zoom thing. So I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to introduce myself earlier. But as the owner and operator of a transportation service here in Port St. Lucie for nearly nine years. I've had the opportunity to meet and converse with residents from all over. I understand what people think and how they feel about our city. As a volunteer for the St. Lucie County Sheriff's Department, I'm familiar with the challenges that we face when it comes to. Crime and public safety in a population that's growing so quickly. I will always, as I mentioned earlier, support law enforcement and for first responders. I believe my life experience, background in business, operations, logistics, and public service. Gives me a unique and diverse perspective. I'm a quick learner with fresh ideas, common sense, and never afraid of a challenge. Mr. Baptiste told the Palm, Treasure Cause Palm in July, he figures two years is enough to get the work done. Ms. Morgan is proud that she's been a member of the city for over fifty years. And she would argue that her experience as the current member of city council makes her best qualified. I would suggest that in fact, she's been in the city so long. Maybe it's time for a change and, and new fresh ideas. It's the current city council, which includes Ms. Morgan, that was not prepared for the trash situation that we're in now. It's the current city council that voted for this super intersection that we now all have to live with at Cross Town and for Laresta. The bottom line is this, if you're happy with the way things are now, you will likely vote for the incumbent. If uh you're ready for a change and uh. I'm your guy. I believe together we can make Port St. Lucie better. Together we can keep Port St. Lucie safe. Together we can protect our waterways and natural resources. I'm Kevin Zimmerman and you can learn more about me at Zimmermanforpsl.com.
Okay, thank you. Next two-minute statement from Indonesia Baptiste.
Thank you very much. My name is Indonesia Baptiste. I am a co-community pastor. I am your candidate for Port St. Lucie City Council District One. I am a former deputy sheriff who is looking forward to working harmoniously with other board members. And volunteer as well as the management team in an effort to put St. Lucie. A safer and better place to live in. I believe my background in management for fourteen years. And seventeen years of law enforcement make me the best candidate for the job. Therefore, I know what the job entails and believe I have the necessary experience to do it well. A city council must know to plan and understand budget. Manage cities finances. Deal with dispute, discuss and carry out ideas and listen to the public. I am also very enthusiastic and give my all to every job that I'm given. These are my goal for the community. If you like me and believe in my goals, please vote for me. Indonesia P. Jean Baptiste on August thirteenth through the twenty-third. Early voting and on August, last day of election on August twenty-third. So I thank you very much for your support and I'm looking forward to be your next city council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Indonesia Baptiste. Uh last uh closing statement from Stephanie Morgan.
Uh thank you to the league for this forum, even though I prefer to be in person, but this has been wonderful. I don't make promises I can't keep. I have proven my leadership and experience. I've not served on the city council for fifty years. I've lived in the city for fifty years. I have served the city and the residents. Since two thousand and sixteen. I look forward to earn your support. I will always work for the residents and listen to the residents. This is a twenty-four-seven job. My cell number is on all of my materials. I'm available via phone call, text, email, through my website or through my Facebook. And I even have Instagram. So I will continue to respect property rights. I will continue to hold Waste Pro accountable for the mess that we're in. I will support the police department. And remain a safe, clean, and beautiful city. A city for all ages. For more information, wordwithmorgan.com. And together, we can achieve more. Thank you for your time and I look forward to serving you again for four more years. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our candidates for being here tonight for participating. Certainly, I thank also the, everyone who has watched and listened for informing yourselves about the election that's coming up. And lastly, not least, certainly the, thank you to the league for bringing everyone together here and for developing the questions. So we want to remind that we, we've made several references to it, but the early uh voting begins August thirteenth. And continues uh through, it's the twentieth. And then, of course, there is election day on the twenty-third. So we encourage you to vote. You've met some of the candidates tonight. Tomorrow we'll meet the mayoral candidates for Port St. Lucie. And Sabrina, we come back to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Carol. Thank you to our, to our three candidates, Ms. Stephanie Morgan, Mr. K. I was, excuse me, Mr. Kevin Zimmerman. And lastly, certainly but not least, Mr. Indonesia Baptiste. Uh thank you also to the public for making the time out of your very busy schedule, certainly one night before the start of school tomorrow. Um and hopefully you have heard what you needed to hear to make an informed decision as a voting public. So we always appreciate you. Continue to be safe. Take care and we'll see you next time. Good night now.
Good night, everyone.